Welcome to the 7:30 regular meeting of Lynchburg City Council. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Nelson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
May we bow our heads to contemplate and reflect. We give thanks for our many blessings and the privilege to serve this city. May we be mindful of those whose lives and futures are fraught with peril, hardships, and despair. Let each of us now take a moment to silently and personally reflect on our challenges with the hope that each of us may identify some effort by which we may improve ourselves, improve our families, improve our neighborhoods and our city, and improve this remarkable nation. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's city council agenda is divided into three sections: consent agenda, public hearings, and general business. The first section is the consent agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. The motion has been seconded. Is there any questions? Please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next is public hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker, she'll have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter rests with council for deliberation. First under public hearing is number eight, the public hearing regarding the petition of Victoria's Inventory LLC to vacate an undeveloped portion of the Bridge Street right-of-way located off of Blackford Street. The total area of the proposed vacation is approximately 116,000ths of an acre, and staff will provide a brief summary. And Ms. Glasgow, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. Victoria's Inventory LLC is petitioning to vacate an undeveloped portion of the Blackford Street right-of-way located off of D Street behind 301 Rivermont. The total area of the proposed vacation is approximately 18,000ths of an acre and includes undeveloped road. The vacation would not impact vehicle or pedestrian access along Blackford Street. Council approved the rezoning of 301 Rivermont to allow for an increased number of apartment units, and the proposed vacation will be used for the building to meet setback requirements. Sidewalk will be built along Blackford Street outside of the vacated area in City right-of-way.
Thank you for the presentation. Is there anyone to make a presentation?
Madam Mayor.
Oh, Councilmember Nelson, I'm sorry.
While he is coming to the podium, I do have a disclosure. I represent the petitioner and actually worked on this project, so I clearly have a conflict of interest, and I will abstain.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Nelson.
My name is Ed Willman. I'm with AccuPoint Surveying and Design. I was the surveyor on the project. Live at 223 Warclane in Lynchburg. I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. And we'll call you back up if we have questions. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right, thank you. No rebuttal is needed. The public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. And I will turn to Councilmember Perro because this was reviewed at the Physical Development Committee on September 10th. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Physical Development Committee did review this. So this took us a little bit to get our head around, and because this presentation is substantially similar, it's the same petitioner, as the next presentation, it took us a while to figure this out. But this is the old, this is part of the old Virginian Apartments projects, right on the opposite side of the Rivermont Bridge from downtown. Okay? So this is part of the improvement to that space. It's right underneath the Rivermont Bridge, this parcel specifically, and you've got a major renovation and improvement project for that. These two vacations of right-of-way really support that project. We discussed this. There is unanimity that we supported that project. These streets are really just dead-end streets. I mean, that one's literally underneath the bridge. And it just, it seemed to have great value to be in the project as opposed to be in the city, as part of City right-of-way. So I'm going to say that explanation as to really both of these items coming up, but for the time being, this was recommended to council by PDC, and I make that motion on behalf of PDC for this specific item.
Thank you, Councilmember Perro, and no second is needed. Are there any questions or further discussion? If not, please cast your vote. Thank you. And the motion passes six with one absentia. Thank you very much. Next is number nine, which is the public hearing, again, regarding petition of Victoria's Inventory LLC to vacate an undeveloped portion of the Blackford Street right-of-way located off of D Street. The total area of the proposed vacation is approximately 18,000ths of an acre, and again, Ms. Glasgow will provide this information.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Commissioner Perro said, this petition is very similar to the previous one. The area to be vacated is for Blackford Street is not publicly maintained, and is approximately 116,000ths of an acre. The right-of-way vacation contains a telephone pole with no other improvements and would be accessible via a public utility easement. Victoria's Inventory has also expressed interest in moving the telephone pole to City right-of-way, but the public utility easement will remain in case the relocation does not occur. The vacation would not impact vehicle or pedestrian access along Bridge Street. Victoria's Inventory plans to use the land for a parking lot, the site plan for which is under review by the Technical Review Committee.
Thank you. Is there anyone to make a presentation?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Nelson, sorry about that.
Thank you. I do have the same disclosure. I represent the petitioner and worked on this project.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone to make a presentation? That's fine, same thing. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right, no rebuttal is needed. Public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. And again, I will turn to Councilmember Perro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the reasons previously stated, the PDC recommends this to council, and I make that as a motion on behalf of PDC.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? And I see we have, is this, I have two motions here. So am I correct, the motion, first motion is to approve the flume amendment?
Right over time.
Oh, I'm sorry, I've moved my sheet. I'm very sorry. Okay, thank you. All right, so with no further discussion, thank you, please cast your vote. And the motion again passes six with one absentia. Thank you. I apologize for that, I had moved the sheet. Next is number 10, the public hearing regarding the petition of Richard Oldham to amend the future land use map from institutional to neighborhood commercial and to rezone approximately three and eighty-nine hundredths acres at 221 Wiggington Road from R2 Low Medium Density Residential District to B1C Limited Business District Conditional to allow the construction of a dentist's office and associated parking. And Mr. Martin will present this request.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The subject property is comprised of approximately 3.89 acres and contains a 3,790 square-foot building with associated parking. The building was constructed in 1952 and has been most recently used as a lodge of the Fraternal Order of the Police. If approved, the building and associated parking would be demolished. The petitions before city council this evening are for a future land use map amendment from institutional to neighborhood commercial and to rezone the property from R2 Low to Medium Density Residential District to B1 Limited Business District Conditional, which would allow for the construction of a dentist's office. Neighborhood commercial areas on the future land use map are intended to consist primarily of office, retail, personal service, and restaurant uses compatible with neighborhoods. The proposed land use designation to neighborhood commercial should be, fit well into the area due to the existing adjacent zoning and land uses in the area. The city's Technical Review Committee reviewed the proposals on August 6th. The city engineered it not require a traffic impact analysis, and the 30 proposed parking spaces exceed that required by the zoning ordinance. Since development would result in a net decrease in impervious areas, it is unlikely that detention facilities would be required for the development. Comments related to the city police department and fire department were minor in nature and would be addressed prior to final site plan approval. Property is served by city water but not city sewer. There would be a drain field serving the development. Voluntarily submitted proffers should be adequate to address any impacts with development. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on August 28th and recommended approval of both the future land use map and the rezoning. It is important to point out that since the Planning Commission meeting, the petitioner did submit a revised concept plan indicating a possible desire to detach the future building addition. Planning staff has no concerns with that because of amount of square footage would stay the same.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone to make a presentation?
I'm Richard Oldham, here to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right, there's no rebuttal needed, and the public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. Councilmember Hegelson, followed by Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, as we look at this area back here, I realize there are several different motions, but I guess when we look at the area back here, it is abutted by business, and as we come back in this area, it is a nice change. Normally, a lot of petitions that we've seen are going from low-density residential to high-density residential. This is beautiful in the fact that it's going from a residential zone into a business zone, which is fabulous from an employment standpoint, it's fabulous from a tax standpoint without having the services, and we appreciate your dental practice, and hopefully it'll grow and prosper. So I'll make a motion that we approve the future land use map amendment.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Wright. Further discussion?
Nothing else to say.
All right, Councilmember Wright, is there any further discussion or questions by council members? All right, well, thank you. Please cast your vote for the motion to approve the flume amendment. And the motion passes seven to zero. And next is the, I'm sorry, right. Next is a motion for, to approve the rezoning. And so, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
All right, Councilmember Wright can second it. Thank you all for reversing that. All right, any further discussion? Councilmember Perro.
I defer to them.
Oh, okay.
And just with that motion, as our city planner, Mr. Martin, stated that I think the plan design or the map may have had a detached structure, so we give that flexibility. That's implicit in the motion, I believe, Mr. Wright?
Yes. Good.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Perro.
Thank you. I was going to follow up on the same thing. Would you explain that again? You said the site plan changed somewhat?
So when this, when this was reviewed by the Planning Commission, a future building addition was here. They would like a little bit more flexibility to have it detached.
Got it, got it. And that's what I reviewed, I guess.
Same amount of square feet should not be any impact.
All right, thank you. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero, and thank you, good luck with the project. Next is number 11, under general business, and that is the report on the city's health insurance plan effective January 1, 2020. Mr. Lowe will provide a presentation. Ms. Savarek, I'm sorry.
Before Mr. Lowe begins his presentation, this is an item that would normally fall under a work session item. It is for your information only, there's no action needed, but we did want to report to you on some increases that need to go into effect January 1 for our health insurance plan year of January 1, 2020 through December 2020.
All right, thank you, Ms. Savarek. Mr. Lowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. So last month, I was here concerning some funding for our plan, and so I want to report further tonight concerning our plans for the health plan for calendar year 2020, and that is the plan in which employees, their dependents and retiree, eligible retirees are in. I would like to focus on trends in medical costs, budget costs versus actual costs, cost-sharing model, the monthly rates that will go into effect January 1st, and then some plans for going forward. In this graph, we see the trend and then actual with some projections toward the end since this year is not yet completed, and of course, next year's not begun. But we see, again, the trend in the light blue, and then the actual costs in the dark blue. And in looking at this, I guess I would say that if you're a bit quizzical or confused by 2019, then I understand that I was too when I looked at it. You can see that there was very dramatic increase in actual experience in 2018, and actually, that was where, whereas Anthem projected a trend of 9.5, the actual costs were 24.3% above the previous year. And so with that, then, we see the lower bars on the graph for this year, and so it might lead us to believe that things are back in line. However, we had had several years of relatively flat costs and cost of funding contributions to the plan, and so when we had such a dramatic increase in 2018, then it takes a while to catch up. We had about a 26% contribution increase last year, and that, as I mentioned in, when I reported a couple of meetings ago, even though we did increase the contribution amounts and percentages, the employee contributions started in January, but the funding was not there to start the employer contributions until July. So we actually, the planned year passed six months without that increase, and so we still have some catching up to do. Perhaps this shows a more logical picture and progression in that you can see that in 2016 that we ended up with, in the red with our plan, but then in 2017, we had a shortfall in 2018, a very dramatic shortfall, and then in 2019, we're projected to have over one and a half million dollar shortfall. So we are proposing and, or taking measures to increase the rates, 5% starting in January, and so, sorry, this is following a model that we implemented in 2016 where you can see that for a single coverage, the employee pays 5% of the overall cost of the coverage, and then with the exception of the two city employees who are married to each other, the other tiers of the plan have a 32% contribution from the employee and a 68% contribution from the employer. So 5% to that. Currently, for single coverage, the employees are paying $25 per month. That will increase $1 in 2020, and so that increase will range, depending on the tier, from $1 to $26. So this is the rate chart for active employees, dependents, and retirees who have a higher date prior to July 1st of 96 and are under the age of 65. Then here is the rate chart for retirees over the age of 65 and who are eligible because they had a pre-96 hire date. We are, in addition to implementing the 5% rate increase, we are researching other options, namely, the utilization of a third-party auditor to review claims concerning appropriate coding and billing for the medical services that were provided to the members, and then also, we're considering hiring an ombudsman who could be instrumental in educating the members, conducting education information, and then also helping them with difficult bills and related matters that we feel would be an advantage to the, to the plan from the benefit of help and then also cost savings. And then we do have an employee wellness committee who are quite active and have done many great things over the past few years, concentrating on mind, body, and soul, and so they will continue to be engaged in matters that will target the wellness of the employees and also the cost savings. And then going forward, in addition to that, we do want to provide cost-efficient, high-quality health care to our employees and other members in the plan. This is important not only to, to those members, but it also is important as a recruitment and retention matter, and things are very competitive in the job market now, and so that certainly is a consideration. We also want to smooth future increases so that we would not be facing a dramatic increase like we had last year with approximately 26% increase. We do want to build a margin for adverse experience and continue to fund at about a 2.5% level until we build up a reserve of 8 to 10%, at which time we would, we would adjust. And there are no plan design changes for 2020. We are planning to bid out our insurance plan for 2020 to make sure that things are And that's all I plan to present to you, but I would entertain questions if you have them.
Thank you. Councilmember Hegelson?
Just a quick question on your last slide, or I guess maybe two back, or that one right there. You said to build up an 8 to 10% reserve, 8 to 10%, a 10% reserve of the projected 2019 expenses, 1.4 million, right?
Yes.
And last year, we blew through 3 million pretty quickly, and we had a reserve that was much higher than 1.4 million. Fortunately, before, we had much higher reserve than just 8 to 10%.
So as, as this table indicates, for 2018, it just, you know, went out of the, out of sight anything that we had experienced before, and you can see that it has stabilized since then. So we do feel that with the increase, and then with, with some residual, that we, we will be in the black at the end of this next planned year, and then we would be able to build on that from year to year.
So this is with the recommendation of our health insurance consultant, Matt Smith, who is here, and he might be able to shed some more light on this, I don't know.
Sure, I guess the point is, I mean, so before, we had a reserve of about 3 million. We blew through that, and now we're really working hard and think this is going to be a goal to reach a 10% reserve, which is about half of what we blew through last year. So what's, am I missing something?
Well, I think there's a couple of things you need to keep in mind. First of all, we went through a couple of years with no increase at all. Going forward, we're trying to put a plan in place where the contributions from the employer and the employee increase at a trend rate so that we don't get significantly behind the curve. So I think we're going to do a better job going forward instead of just holding numbers flat when we're having good years to build up that reserve. Secondly, I think 18 was just such a, such an outlier that it's highly unexpected for a group your size, really, to have more than a 10% variance in the expected rates. I grant it, 18 was, but that was highly unusual, wouldn't expect that to happen again.
But before, in previous inflation, you know, deflation from where we are now.
Right.
We had a reserve that was twice as big as what we're shooting for. So normally, in times with inflation, we kind of have a little bit bigger reserve. So that's why I'm wondering, why are we not shooting for the same reserve that we had? Because that actual same dollar amount of reserve is actually less on a percentage basis.
Right, I understand.
Because you got a much larger expense.
Right. The 10% is based on sort of normal, sort of actuarial numbers, is what you could expect over time for the variance, maximum variance off expected.
Yep.
If you were to say to me, what about having 3 million, I'd say, hey, that's great. But then you're going to be in a situation where you're going to have to increase probably at 7.5% or 8% or 9% a year as opposed to 5%. So we're trying to keep things in line in terms of having a lower increase for the employer and the employee, but basically fund forward at a level that's appropriate.
So I realize that funding forward, and it may take us a while, but our goal, when we went through, how did we have 3 million in the insurance reserve that we're able to use to cover the cost?
So I think over time, we built that up from reduced claims, right? And then we had this epically bad year in 2018, and we will build up the reserve, and we hope that it will build bigger than, than what we expect because of reduced claims.
So then, flip your next slide then. If you can go to the next slide, maybe I'm, well, the other direction. One more for, yeah, to the end, closer to the end, where it said in eight, yeah, that. So to me, as I'm reading that, it sounds like we're looking to build up this reserve to only be 8 to 10%, and then not building it anymore. Am I reading that wrong?
Well, I think that's, the short-term goal is to get it to that level. I think it's a, it's a moving target, so to speak. So the immediate goal is to fund at 2.5% to 3% above expected to get us up to 8 to 10%, but as we go forward.
Like within a year?
We reevaluate based on the situation.
We talking about 8 to 10% reserve within a year, or we?
I think it would, I think based on our projection, it'll take two to three years to get to 8 to 10%.
Yes, we don't expect to achieve that in one year.
Okay, but, well, once we get there, okay, it just, to me, it seems like we had a great, we had a good reserve, and we had a problem.
Right.
Fortunately, because we had the reserve, we were able to meet that problem without ancillary trouble. Now we're looking at recognizing that we had a problem, we're going to have a problem again at some point in the future. So let's have a reserve at only half of what we had before? That, to me, is what it doesn't make as much sense.
Are you saying that we are doing this for now to get it back up to a certain level in the next two to three, but that's not to say that we would not continue to build a reserve, and hopefully, combination of the experiences will be decreased?
Correct.
So that we won't experience this off-year of 14 million plus?
Right, and I obviously can't say that'll never happen again. I can tell you, that's a highly unusual variance for a group your size. Another alternative, if you were to consider it, you could actually buy what they call aggregate reinsurance. So you could get a contract that says if our claims go more than 10% above expected, the reinsurance company would come in and take the reinsurance company would come in and take the difference. There's obviously a cost associated with that, but for a group your size, it's relatively minor cost. It's almost, it's so inexpensive because it's so unlikely to happen. Again, I cannot, you can never guarantee with a group that's aging and all the other things that are going on that it won't happen, but it's highly unlikely. We could actually, at some point, consider putting in aggregate reinsurance. I normally would not recommend it for a group your size because over my experience of the last 25 years, I think I've had one group once your size go over 10, more than 10% above. And that, I mean, that's the example right there.
All right. Thank you very much. Any further questions? Councilmember Perrow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I could not reconcile slides 3 and 4. It just doesn't line up to me. What am I missing? Yes, that's percentage, but it basically says, from 2017 to 2020, our average increase is below our trend increase. That tells me that we are not doing anything to match our trends in our employee contributions. If we were matching our trends, we should have leveled out, right?
I'm sorry, I'm not clear on the question.
So the trend, the light blue, right? So we're not indexed, our employee contributions are not indexed to the trend. Because if they were indexed to the trend, then we, by the percentage, by the average percentage, we should have been okay.
Correct. And the average trend?
So why aren't we?
I'm sorry?
So why aren't we?
Well, you have, just as you said, you have not increased the employee or the employer contributions.
Which is a failing. That's a failing, I believe. We should be doing a whole lot better than that. We should be, we, this surprise we got, and we talked about this last time, but this, that surprise was unfortunate. We need to be indexed, we need to be, we need to be growing, and we need to change our policies regarding insurance. I think we need to set up a new class, protect our existing employees, and set up a new class for new employees going forward. Paying 95 of health, of all health insurance programs is not sustainable, and I'm not sure who else even does that.
So we'll provide additional information, we'll do some comparisons with peers, and bring back some research on that.
I think that'd be a good idea. Thank you. I mean, we went through a number of years with no increase, and we're trying to put a plan in place, and maybe not dramatically in place, but a plan in place that we're going to have increases at a, at least at a 5% level because that looks adequate based on your last 10 years of track.
It's too little, too late.
Question. How much of the benefit plan is a part of our recruitment and retention as well? I mean, we're going to have to look at all of that as well, so.
Sure. So as Mr. Lo stated, having a, I wouldn't necessarily call this a rich plan, but certainly a plan that is comparable to other localities, that it is a retentionary recruitment tool, no question. Employees look at what the benefits are when they are seeking employment.
Because I'm just looking at some of the family costs, and I know, having worked for a private nonprofit, I know the family cost for an organization with about similar number of employees was about $900 a month. And so, I mean, I realize it is kind of a rich, and, but, it is something that we use as a recruitment tool or as a retention tool. I just think we have to balance that out because healthcare is so important and because of our needs within the city, plus being a government entity, the competitiveness of the recruitment of employers. But if we can use that to maintain a workforce that values the healthcare piece, I just don't want to lose the side of that conversation as well.
Well, and certainly, average salary increases for employees don't even come close to the increases that we see in health insurance.
Right. Councilmember Higginson?
And just one thing, I think, you know, lots of companies will have for the employee cost and fund for employees and maybe at a higher percentage. But for family and dependent coverage, this seems extremely rich, that we're paying 68% of the cost for someone having children and having a family and whatnot to be covered under the plan. As opposed to, you know, some companies, they'll pay for the employee, but very little with regarding their dependents because the dependents don't work, as you mentioned, for the city. I recognize it's a compensation package that goes out to the employees, but many times when we're looking at the compensation package, we kind of pick different parts at a time. And so we got to remember that compensation package is the pay plus the VRS, plus the, you know, the pension, plus the health insurance, plus lots of things. And sometimes we'll say, oh, well, we haven't had, we'll isolate and fixate on one issue. We'll say, well, we haven't had a raise in so many years. Well, we haven't had a cost of a health insurance cost-sharing cost either, you know, increase. So lots of things, I think we really need to look at the package as opposed to, so many times we isolate and kind of, at times, we can cherry pick. We can say, hey, we got, we paid less than a private entity, but we're not contributing 18% to 20% for a pension, or we're not paying for their health insurance, you know. So that is something that I think we really probably need to look at. I mean, a lot of the plans have really changed. The costs have gone through the roof. And still providing 68% for an employee's children and spouse, that, to me, seems pretty rich. Is that pretty rich?
By most states, yes. I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Wright?
Yeah, I was just going to echo, I think I'd certainly be interested in seeing more data of how Lynchburg compares to other localities. But I do think, to echo your point, Mayor, that it's really important that we offer a benefits package that is competitive in the low unemployment economy in which we are competing for talent. If we want high-quality talent, then we have to offer competitive wages and certainly competitive benefits. So although I'm keen to do a deep dive into what the comparison data looks like and evaluate it, I'd also just add a note of caution about, you know, adjusting the benefit structure anytime soon.
Thank you. And you had some more?
No.
Okay. Any further questions? All right, thank you. And this is for information-only right now, and is there anything that anyone would like beyond what we've probably said to our city manager and staff to research or to bring back? We know what's coming back when we look at future plans, but, okay, if you need anything else.
I guess just one thing, there are, I think you did mention, Ms. Silvercheck, that you're, there is going to be, you're doing some level of audit to make sure that the claims that were paid with 2018 is commensurate with the claims that should have been paid and it wasn't based on improper coding and whatnot.
Mr. Smith is helping us identify some auditors to come in and do a sampling of our claims.
Correct. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next is number 12, which is consideration of introducing a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020 city federal state aid fund budget and appropriating $49,210 with resources from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services to purchase law enforcement equipment for the Lynchburg Police Department. And I will turn to Chief Zudima. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. We were contacted on, actually, the 27th of September, so just not even quite two weeks ago, last minute, quite honestly, on a Friday night, with someone from DCJS who said, hey, do you have $50,000 you could use somewhere? No local match. I said, absolutely, where do I sign? And so we got the information, and this is old JAG money that they had at the state level, DCJS did, that they're willing to provide to us. Some of that's through the relationships we've developed with them over the years, as well as how well, quite bluntly, our budget staff has handled other grants. They actually mentioned that our budget staff stays on top of that, both at the city level and at the department level. So we're going to use this money to purchase 11 laptop computers that are Panasonic Tough Books. We've done testing and evaluation on one of those in a vehicle we have over the last six to nine months and have been very happy with it. This will hopefully eliminate some of the IT maintenance costs that we have and kind of the ability of our folks to be out in the field a little more often and not getting their stuff worked on quite as much. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Thank you. And there was not time for this to be reviewed by the Finance Committee, but I'll turn to Councilmember Higginson, our Finance Chair, because I know you discussed it with them.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This did come to our October 22 Finance Committee meeting. Unfortunately, October 22 has not happened yet. So because of the urgency and because of the fact that there is no local match, because of the fact that the police department has need for the books and the Tough Books and whatnot, I make a motion for approval.
Thank you. The motion's made in second. No further questions? Please cast your vote. And the motion passes 7 to 0. Thank you. Number 13 is consideration of the draft 2020 legislative agenda, and this will be Ms. Silvercheck presenting this item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. It's that time of year when I present to you the draft 2020 General Assembly Legislative Agenda. You have attached to the agenda summary an annotated version of the 2019 agenda with suggested revisions as proposed by staff. We will bring this back to you on October 22 for adoption. This evening's presentation is for you to discuss the agenda, propose any changes for adoption on the 22nd. Highlights of the 2020 proposed legislative agenda include: update a language regarding the potential impact of changes in legislation that could eliminate the machinery and tools and/or business license taxes; a significantly enhanced section on economic development which clarifies the importance of funding from the Commonwealth for business attraction, retention, and expansion; update a language relating to recent amendments regarding proffers; new language regarding support for an overhaul of the mental health system and particularly support for temporary detention order transports; and support for additional local beds for mental health patients to avoid out-of-town transports. That's directly related to the presentation that Chief Zudima did earlier this afternoon. There is new language regarding support for various transportation initiatives and a significant update to the section formerly labeled water quality and environment and now labeled drinking water, water quality and environment. There have been two suggestions, two additions for consideration. One regarding the language that exists that authorized the creation of an airport authority. So I am proposing that we add language that states that we amend, that we ask the General Assembly to amend the Virginia's Region 2000 Airport Authority Act to allow the City of Lynchburg by itself or with the governing bodies of one or more counties of Amherst, Appomattox, Bedford, and Campbell, by resolution declare there is a need for an airport authority to be created for the purpose of establishing or operating an airport for such participating political subdivision. The language that is added is by itself or with versus to allow the City of Lynchburg and because there, we don't know what the future holds in terms of conversations with the adjacent counties, and we want to have that flexibility to be able to create the authority by ourselves. In addition, it was proposed by Councilmember Perrow that we add language that came out of the draft Virginia First Cities Legislative Agenda that we just got last Friday. And that language is to state that we support increasing funding by $4 million in the Brownfields Restoration and Remediation Fund and have a specific state budget language that would allow grant application for public housing remediation and infrastructure work associated with public housing on former landfill sites. This is language that the City of Richmond is looking at to include in their legislative agenda, and it would help us as well. Richmond's language is 3 million, and we think that is project-specific. Staff needs to do a little more research on that, but I added $1 million to that just as potential funding for public housing, perhaps at Deerington. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Is there any conversation or discussion regarding our legislative agenda? Yes, Councilmember Perrow?
Just to add to what Mr. Silvercheck stated about the landfill work, I think we need to make sure that the language needs to be on or adjacent to. On the conference call with the Virginia First Cities Executive Committee, the City of Richmond asked VFC to carry that legislation in their agenda. I thought it was a good idea. I just reached out to staff, I think yesterday, to see if they could look into it, to get some more information from Richmond, figure out what their project was and how they're doing, and if they would also carry language. You know, we would basically have the same language together so that hopefully we could find a project, or I can tell you, the Housing Authority, of which the mayor and I are commissioners of, could certainly use renovation work at the Deerington housing area. And then this would be a source of funding for that project. I think Richmond probably has something similar. So that's why I brought that up. Yeah, thank you. Otherwise, I think the other items on this are good. I specifically looked at the economic development pieces as well as the proffers and the revisions there, and the drinking water and so forth, to make sure that we are consistent with our requests from previous times. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further insight, thoughts, suggestions? I just want to go back to our retreat the other week, and we talked about weeds. And I know we talked about not specifying how people beautify their property. I understand getting into that. But is there, is this an opportunity to look at language because we have the ability to regulate grass and how high that can go to similarly, similarly, do something for weed growth on properties?
Well, we do have the authority to regulate weeds. What we get complaints about are people's shrubbery in bushes. So yes, we could ask the General Assembly to amend the section of the state code that gives us the authority to regulate grass and weeds to also include, you know, such things as shrubbery and trees because that's what we get complaints about, that citizens don't trim that. And right now, that isn't covered by our ordinance because the authority from the state code says weeds and grass doesn't include telling people they have to trim their shrubbery and trees as well.
I don't know what the, you know, council, I'd like to hear others' opinions, but I know we have many properties in the city, whether owner-occupied or not, that have this issue. And so if we don't have any opportunity to affect it, but we can affect the grass and weeds, I think that's limiting. And I think if we're trying to develop neighborhoods in a way that, just investment by others and persons, their properties and/or as a city, if we look at a lot of our properties, which we'll have discussions on in the future, I would be interested in including some type of language that references that.
I know we have had the, had that problem in our area. I was just surprised that we couldn't regulate that. I know we can do the grass, but I just, I wasn't aware that we couldn't do the hedges until we had an incident here recently. So it is worth looking into, but I would like to kind of hear what are some of the other thoughts from other localities? Is it, I know they're so protective of certain land rights. I don't know what, like, hear what some of the other concerns are.
Councilmember Higginson?
You know, one concern would be from the fact of how we regulate weeds is from the standpoint that there can be lots of vermin. I mean, it's a health hazard. You're getting rats, and you got snakes, and you got vermin, and you got all sorts of things there. When you have boxwoods that haven't been properly manicured, I'm wondering if that's a similar fashion? I don't think so. I think it's more of an aesthetic kind of area, as opposed to having something that is like at the corner of a property line that would be overgrown and big where you can't see around it when you're trying to pull up. Totally understand that. But I think this is, we're kind of getting into, you know, the aesthetics of how someone trims their boxwoods or how they trim their azaleas or their lilacs that are up by the house. So I don't know how we could really do that if it gets, because it's not a health relation, it's more an aesthetic relation. So we look at it, we don't like it because it looks bad. Mr. Irwin, I think you can probably maybe chime in on that. We can regulate things based on a, not because we don't like the aesthetics of it, but we from an actual public safety policy, health concern.
You know, at this time, Virginia, as a general... You know, at this time, Virginia, as a general rule, does not allow localities to regulate aesthetics. Does allow us to regulate dangerous, unsafe conditions, if you think overgrown vegetation, if it provides unsanitary conditions, harborage for rats, then that would fall within the health, and we can address it. A lot of times, when we get these complaints about overgrown yards, we do get the Health Department to go out and take a look at it, to see if they think any of those conditions exist, and if they do, we can trim them. But as a general rule, Virginia so far is saying, well, you know, we're not going to require people to be good neighbors. You know, you can be the tacky house in the neighborhood that lets your trees and shrubs grow up, and you're not harming anybody, other than the fact that people just don't like to look at it. So certainly, other states do go much further and give localities the right to regulate, you know, this type of situation. So, you know, we, you know, again, remember, Virginia is a Dillon Rule state, so we are limited in what we can do to what the state code says. You know, right now, it says we can regulate grass and weeds, and so that's what we're stuck with, just like the leash law says. We can have a leash law for dogs, but we can't have a leash law for cats. But we could certainly ask the General Assembly to amend the section in the state code, to broaden it, to include shrubbery, trees, you know, in addition to weeds and grass, if we want to. I'm not sure what reception that will get in the General Assembly. Sometimes these types of, this type of legislation takes several years to get it through. You have to introduce it, bill support, and keep coming back, get other localities to sign on. But we can certainly put that in our legislative agenda, and if this is an important issue that council would like to address, we can start to work on it.
And we can use the quote that I found from Patrick Henry, which says, "Give me beautiful shrubbery, or give me death."
Well, I think, I think it's important to people who are taxpayers and investors in their neighborhoods and properties. And we do occasionally send the Health Department out, because sometimes there may be an issue that puts it at a safety issue or a health concern. So, I mean, I don't take it lightly, and I want, you know, our citizens to understand I don't take it lightly, because it's not just one or two properties. And we see that in other parts of the city and/or other neighborhoods. And so I just think, I mean, it's not something that may pass or get consideration this year. And it's not just aesthetics to those persons who are in the neighborhoods. And so I just want to take that seriously as a concern, and we see it, again, across the city and other areas. And at some point, somebody had to have a problem with the grass and weed, and then that got written in. So that's all I'm saying, is that there may be an opportunity to do that. Vice Mayor Dolan?
Thank you. Well, I would just be a little bit concerned of overregulation, because what happens if your neighbor has boxwoods that are diseased, and all of a sudden you're calling downtown and saying, you know, I just, I think if it's, if it's, if there's rodents, or it's hazardous to health, I think that's great, but I just would not want to see overregulation in this area. I love beauty too, but, and again, it all depends on what your viewpoint is. What might be ugly to somebody may not be to another person. So the whole thing is pretty subjective, I think.
Councilman, thank you. Councilmember Wright?
Well, I suppose I don't, I don't have any specific thoughts on that item, though. I guess I would just raise for everybody's awareness that we probably want to keep our list relatively, whatever we decide on, we probably want to keep relatively concise, so that when we do go to Richmond and advocate for our agenda, that we just prioritize our asks of our representatives, though I don't have any comment on this particular item.
Thank you. Councilmember Perrow?
I found it quite humorous that Mr. Irwin was talking about regulating taste and tackiness, and then I noticed your tie, sir, which I love, which I love. However, you remind me of my dear friend and mentor, Preston Wade, who wore some of the best ties I'd ever seen. I think he gave me a Halloween tie once, with skeletons dancing on it, and lightning striking him and a moon somewhere. It was magnificent. So I appreciate your tie has much more art to it than any of Mr. Wade's. But I just, I just thought I was rich. I'm a fan. So I agree with what's been said earlier. I can, there's a, I can think of a yard right now that is absolutely covered up with shrubbery, and I personally don't like, but I was talking to the owner of the establishment, and he loves it. He loves it. He said, he said he wanted to have his house to be in the middle of the woods, and he's succeeding in doing so in a rapid fashion. And, you know, it's, it's personal taste, it's personal preference, and I don't think we should get in the way of that. And I'll reiterate, I do love your tie. I hope you wear it again.
Thank you. And I'll just want the record to reflect that I inquired, asked, and we had the discussion about that. Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anything else that you need from us? It will come back October 22nd?
Yes, I will provide a clean copy with the amendments that I spoke about that were not included in this original copy for your consideration on October 22nd.
Okay.
Just one thing that I think should be, you know, as Councilmember Wright said, you know, focusing, I think, is probably going to be better than such a broad shotgun and so many different things that I got a feeling a lot of our local folks won't, you know, heed too much. One thing that I think we probably should focus a little more on is what we had the meeting on this afternoon, which was the ECOs. I realize the TDOs are in here, and the TDOs, I can, as I mentioned this afternoon, I think that's, at least it has a medical assignment, a prescription, if you will, where the ECO could be a lot easier, and it could be granted a lot easier. I would really like us to see if the ability for, you know, to really have something with the ECOs on there. So however we can craft that, you know, because, because if there is, you know, one that I went on, it was, I was kind of surprised that didn't really understand why it had to been an ECO. I mean, I think somebody didn't show up to an appointment, and somebody said, "Well, we're going to write an ECO." And so the TDO, I think it goes through a little more scrutiny, and it's a little, has medical backing, as opposed to kind of something that's kind of thrown out there. So, and I think you can plan a little bit more for your TDOs than you can your ECOs, probably, can't you, Chief? Yeah, yeah. So if we can put something in there, I think that's, that would be, to give us at least some ability to utilize not full law enforcement people to be security, you know, some way what we can do to, because that train is coming right at us. So, thank you.
Councilmember Perrow?
Mr. Verchek, maybe, and I didn't, I didn't know about this coming forward when I was on the VC, VFC meeting, but maybe we ought to bring up the TDO and ECO issue with them as well, and they, because that benefits all cities.
Absolutely.
I think they had carried that in their legislation. Thanks.
I will share this draft with Virginia First Cities.
Yeah, and as was stated earlier this afternoon, you know, when you go down there to where it is at Virginia, at the Lynchburg General Hospital, there's cop cars from, the sheriff's cars from the county, from Bedford County, Appomattox County, Lynchburg City, I don't even know if they had Nelson, but maybe Nelson had somebody here. When you look at that, it was, when I first went there, I thought it was an FOP meeting. I was so surprised that they were from all over. And so it's not just a Lynchburg problem, as I think was stated today. I think we've got to figure something out.
All right. Thank you. No further discussion. Next, we're on to consideration of adopting zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance amendments related to short-term rentals. And this is Mr. Wodoka and Mr. White.
Well, I will, we are glad to be back to talk about the short-term rentals again this evening, and I will defer to my good colleague, Mr. White.
Thank you, Deputy Manager Wodoka. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. The purpose of our presentation is to briefly review where you left off with your short-term rental ordinance discussion, and provide a few follow-up informational points based on your last discussion. For items you have previously discussed, I've noted in parentheses whether you reached consensus, voted, or if the item is already required by some other existing code. So based on the direction you gave us at your September 10th meeting, the ordinance would require the following. Short-term rentals would be allowed by right in residential and commercial zoning districts, as well as institutional, too. Owner occupancy, which is, or the requirement for the building to be the owner's primary residence, would not be required in any zoning district. And based on the requirements of the underlying zoning, any building used as a short-term rental in lower-density neighborhoods, zoning districts, Resource Conservation R1, R2, must maintain the appearance of single-household homes. Short-term rentals would be required to meet the state's building code requirements, just like any other structure. A maximum of four unrelated guests would be allowed to stay in a short-term rental. An unlimited number of related guests may stay in a short-term rental, and when two or more related individuals stay in the unit, only one unrelated person may stay with them. And no additional parking space would be required for the short-term rental unit. The city would sign an agreement with Airbnb to collect lodging tax on the reservations made through their platform, which is expected to cover approximately 90% of the hosts in Lynchburg. Those taxes would be charged to the guest, and they would, when they book, which saves the host from remitting directly to the city. Based on the first two months of state sales tax remittance, you recall Mr. Knuckles spoke about that last month, this is conservatively expected to generate $150,000 revenue, which is considerably more than the $84,000 originally projected. The city would also contract with a third party to identify the location of short-term rental units in the city. Using that information, the Commissioner's Office would work with hosts that list on other platforms to voluntarily remit lodging tax. The ordinance would become effective immediately, and operators would be required to register and pay one-time $150 registration fee by July 1, 2020. Operators would be required to notify the city when their contact information changes. Although owners of multiple short-term rental units must register all their properties, they would only be required to pay one, one-time $150 registration fee. In the coming months, staff would work to notify operators in advance of the registration deadline, so there were the requirement. Those hosts that do not register could be subject to a $500 penalty. And the city may revoke approval for three ordinance violations in three years related to the short-term rental. At council's direction, the ordinance has been clarified, so that violations would specifically be related to the short-term rental use. You can see some examples on the screen, as opposed to the structure itself. So our follow-up items, the first is, there were a couple of references during your discussion to changing the ordinance in the future if it was not working. To clarify, once the use is permitted, the owner's rights are vested. So for something like owner occupancy, or the number of residents, or the number of guests, if council decides to change that ordinance at some point in the future, existing short-term rentals would be allowed to operate per the original ordinance you adopt. So there are two different options of how those existing uses might continue in light of an ordinance change. As currently drafted, the future ordinance changes would make the existing short-term rentals non-conforming uses. The use would be allowed unless it ceases to operate for two years, even if the property is sold, transferred, or if the owner is deceased. This is different from the grandfathering discussion you had back in August, where the zoning administrator would issue an administrative permit for short-term rentals that are operating prior to the ordinance adoption. This, too, would exempt operators from something like a change in owner occupancy. However, the exemption would go away if the property was sold, transferred, or if the owner is deceased. And in either of those cases, operators would probably, would, may need to provide proof of verification that it was operating prior to the ordinance. The question was also raised about whether or not the proposed ordinance changes would apply to accessory units, things like garage apartments, mother-in-law suites that are used as short-term rentals. The short answer is yes. In lower-density residential zoning districts, so basically your R1 and R2, the primary dwelling must be owner-occupied to even allow an accessory unit. So if the primary dwelling is the owner's primary residence, they would be allowed to have an accessory unit, and that, and that unit could then be used as a, as a short-term rental. In other residential districts, owner occupancy is not required to have an accessory unit. The number of units is provided based on the underlying zoning in those districts. Staff also reviewed options to exempt short-term rental hosts from registering and/or paying lodging tax if hosting only a limited number of times per year. Unfortunately, the current technology only identifies the location and owner-operator information. It does not yet allow staff to determine the actual dates, the rental rate, or the number of nights the unit is rented. Staff does not currently have the resources to determine if a unit is being rented within an exemption period. So what this would look like is, the default is, if you were to set an exemption, staff would have to assume non-registered units are operating within the exemption, exemption period, which would, in effect, negate the need for the registry. Similarly, our understanding is that the voluntary collection agreement, which we would, we were proposing to sign with Airbnb, is effectively a pass-through for lodging tax. The platform collects and remits the lodging tax directly from the guests without the host's involvement. Since that agreement does not provide for exemptions, this would create inequity among the hosts that rent on other platforms, and require additional resources if the expectation is staff determine whether the host is exempted from lodging tax or not. Lastly, there was some discussion about the purpose of the registry. Specifically, the registry provides host contact information, so rather than things like limited liability corporations, that sort of thing, if staff needs to follow up regarding complaints or has questions about tax remittance. The option to prohibit rental units that repeatedly violate local and state ordinances is only available if the city maintains a registry. The registry does not make some violations easier to prove. We've talked about things like occupancy and noise violations. They're challenging with or without the registry. However, if the enforcement process for violations that are proven is streamlined, while still providing the due process to the owner that we've discussed. The question was also asked if staff costs would decrease if the city did not manage a registry. Our belief is actually that staff costs would increase without the registry due to the additional research involved with following up with operators who list on program, or platforms outside of Airbnb. So we tried to do that quickly, so that, because I know you, to give deference to your discussion, that's the review for the folks. Mr. Martin, Mr. Knuckles, Mr. Henry and I, along with all the other staff who've collaborated on this ordinance, are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Haggelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, what's interesting, I think, you know, a lot, I appreciate the, you know, putting together and the summary and whatnot. One thing that I think is interesting is when we first began talking about this, the proposed or expected lodging tax was about $84,000, right?
Right.
Now, we're anticipating it to be $150,000. That is a 78% increase over what we anticipated just a few months ago. And so, you know, when we look at that, and Councilmember Nelson, when you, when you had maybe mentioned as far as covering the costs, this increase is about another $66,000, which would actually cover the cost of 440 rental units from not having to pay $150 fee. And this would be annual, correct, Mr. Knuckles? So this estimate is an annual fee, the registration of $150 per property, you know, which, the extra $66,000 would come in pretty quickly and pretty easy, right?
That's correct.
And so without a lot of extra work, and without actually adding an extra burden on our property owners that would now have to pay $150 fee, and also, I'm reminded of what we did a few months ago, or time flies, what may have been a couple of years ago, when we lowered the business license because of the fact that it cost a whole lot more in having to ascertain and find all these people to collect some money than it was to justify the money, right? What did we do on that, again?
Well, what we eliminated was the no-fee license.
Yes.
So we weren't collecting any money, but we were spending a lot of labor.
On, on nothing, or, yeah. And so with that, I'm wondering if the fact that we've now realized this increase in revenue by about $66,000, which is enough to offset the 440 peoples paying the revenue by about $66,000, which is enough to offset the 440 peoples paying a $150 registration fee, and the registration fee, I think you mentioned, was a one-time fee, and the extra 66,000 with this lodging tax is actually annual. And so it seems like we would come out way ahead if we adopted, that we kind of negotiated with the Airbnb folks that said, hey, if you agree to lodging tax, not both of them, you know, so I think that's kind of, if we adopt the lodging tax without that fee, I think we're going to collect as much money as we thought, even more than we thought we'd collect before, and then not having, you know, to worry about exempting because we can always change the fee, right? Yeah, so that's not a grandfathering, because we've raised taxes, you know, quite often. And so, and fees get raised, so that's not a problem with grandfathering or a vested right, because fees can be raised.
Can I just, I'm sorry, if I can just ask a question. So the registration fee was also because we don't know through the Airbnb collection process who is submitting as far as properties in the city. So it's not just the money, it is also, and/or what may be potentially collected, but it's also the ability to know where the Airbnbs are operating as far as our city, correct?
Yes, ma'am. So the registry allows us that and contract with a third party. It's council's discretion on whether or not to charge a fee from that, and I believe your last discussion was whether or not to offset staff costs. But again, that's council's discretion with that.
And so if it's not about the money...
If I could just add, one, one point. The one thing the registry does is it allows the commissioner's office to have a listing of the folks that are providing the service. Without that, without that list through Kent's office, provided to my office, the only way to do that is my office would have to do that legwork. And I just do not have the labor to make that happen.
And so with that, if it's not about the money, we could change that fee at 30 bucks, then?
Well, I think that we put the 150, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, going back, we've had so many conversations on this, to defray the cost, and I understand the difference. However, I think it's still a commercial business, and it operates as a business, and profits are being made, and/or that's a business decision on whether you want to pay the fine that we assert to that. But Councilmember Nelson had something to say, I'm sorry.
Yes, I have a number of things to say, but just to follow up on that, the purpose of the registry is to identify where the properties are being operated and who is the responsible person. And that, of course, involves staff time. We've talked about owner occupancy, and we're not requiring that. If, however, an owner were to occupy his property, and that's the only property he or they would subject to a short-term rental, how much problem would it cause staff to say that an owner-occupied, short-term rental property does not have to register, since we know who the owner is? And if their, if their name shows up on the platform, the Airbnb platform, we know who the owner is, and we know who's accountable, and he can, he can say, well, I'm owner-occupied, I should be waived for renting it out? Is that, would that create a problem for either of you in your departments?
Well, again, we've got to do the research, the legwork, to make that determination that the individual's providing that service.
Well, Airbnb or the platform is going to tell you the identity of the person's...
No. Airbnb is sending us a check. That's all they're doing.
All right, if, all right, I'm trying to get to a point where the infrequent owner-occupant is not burdened with something that is going to be within the realm of that infrequent use that we talk about, like yard sale, sales tax.
Yeah, maybe, maybe register no-fee for owner-occupied. So they're registered.
Well, yeah, yeah, that would...
But they're just not paying a fee, because I guess...
It's owner occupancy.
But, so in that instance, you'd say under a certain number of days, is that what we're saying? You wouldn't have, you would register but not pay a fee?
You would register, not be a fee, not pay a fee, you're the owner-occupant. If you are living somewhere else so often, you're not owner-occupied anymore.
Sure.
But if it is your, it is your residence and domicile, and you register, then at that point, I would, I would think it might be prudent or reasonable to say you don't have to pay the fee. Because if they have another property, they will pay a fee on that.
So I've looked for head nods. We're doing this on the fly, but yes, I think that's, I think that's enforceable. I think we could determine the owner-occupied structure and then exempt them from the fee, as long as we don't do things like number of nights, that sort of thing. That's the data we don't have, so.
The idea being, if it's owner-occupied, I'm sorry...
We can work with that.
The premise, the premise is, if it's owner-occupied, it's not going to be used extensively like an investment STR, presumptively.
And it gets what I need, because it creates the registry. Whether there's a fee attached or not, I just need the information if I'm going to try to assess and collect the lodging tax.
I just wouldn't want to create a problem for either department.
Thank you.
So we could create the registry, and then no fee, and then raise it, you know?
And see what kind of income is coming in.
I would just offer a scenario that might counter to what you're suggesting, Councilmember, which is, let's say, for example, you have a boyfriend and girlfriend that each have separate residences, and one, you know, they, they put both on Airbnb or whatever, and then they just, they sleep some, you know, at, at the other person's residence based on when that, their other one is booked. And presumably, in that scenario, you could actually have that, you know, either property being rented out quite a bit. So I don't know that it necessarily addresses the frequency challenge. I don't pretend to know what the answer is, but I think there are a lot of scenarios in which people would, would take advantage of that system to offer it, not unreasonably, but, but to offer it more frequently.
True.
All right, any further discussion, questions for our staff?
Just a follow-up thought on that. I, I think, what, Mr. Wright, what you raised is a valid point. I, I don't, I think that would be the outlier as opposed to the norm. I think what the norm would be, would somebody like, I'm thinking about my neighbor, who, who rents out maybe once a month for a couple nights to a visiting professor or something like that, where they're sleeping in the basement and sharing a bathroom with the family. So that person's paying like 20 bucks a night. And one of the, one of the comments that I've heard from people that participate in SDRs is that, gee, they'd have to rent their place out like 10 times in order to make it worthwhile and pay the fee. And that sounded like a reasonable, a reasonable concern to me. So I, I think if you allowed the, if you, if you said owner-occupied, you register, exempt from the fee, but if you own another house, then you're, you're certainly paying the fee. And I...
If you only have one property, and it's, and you live in that property, even if you have, say, multiple accessory units within that property, like, let's say you could rent out, you have four bedrooms and you rent out three bedrooms, you're technically living there, and you could have people coming and going, more or less all the time, but you wouldn't be paying a fee. Under this, I'm just trying to understand exactly what's being proposed.
But if you, but if you had a place that wasn't owner-occupied, yes, you're certainly paying the fee, and you've got to register that property as well.
You've got to register both.
Yes, and I don't think that, you know, the fee is, is to make up for some staff time. I think the real revenue is in the, is in the...
So, so should we just, I mean, should we just do away with the, the fee? I mean, is that, is that the more reasonable solution?
Two of us voted for that.
Well, because I feel like there, we could be introducing a fair amount of inequity into the system, where you have people who are, it is owner-occupied, but they are still making a fair amount of revenue off of it, because, let's say they have a more desirable property, they happen to live in it, but they, for whatever, by hook or by crook, whatever, they manage to make a fair amount of, of money off of that, same as somebody who owns multiple properties. So I just, I don't feel like that's necessarily an equitable solution.
And that's the beauty, I think what is equitable is the lodging tax, because it's based on how much the room is rented for, or the house is rented for. The bigger the number, the more lodging tax you get. And so, which is a good incentive for property owners, it's a good incentive for neighbors, it's a good incentive for somebody who's not just renting out 20 bucks for their, their, you know, share in the bedroom. So I think that's, and it's something we can always revisit in the future, because it's not a vested right that you have zero fee, so, and especially when you look at how much extra is being proposed. I mean, that, that is estimated, so.
Councilmember Wilder.
You know, I'm just trying to get my head around it. We, we have talked about this so many times, and we have talked about the fee so many times. I mean, it was a fee, it's not a fee, it is a fee. How many more times are we going to talk about this, or is it going to come back? Is this the last time?
This is the last time. I'll second, I'll second your counter, number right motion.
And then can we stop, keep changing, because I'm getting so confused about what we're doing and what we're not doing, and what's the best way, yeah.
What our main purpose is, yeah.
So I'm getting, am I telling the truth? It's been like three times, four times.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we want to talk about it until we get it right. And just to arbitrarily set a night or day to make a decision is not necessarily getting it right. More fundamentally, we have zoning ordinances for a purpose, and we designate residential areas for a purpose. We want to encourage our citizens to live in a residential-zoned area and be enduring citizens in that area, which doesn't encompass coming and going, different people from different parts of the state or the nation or the world, having transient occupancy in those neighborhoods. We want to build neighborhoods that have continuity and integrated citizens who are involved with their neighbors, with their children, with their schools, with all of our community and our community government, and all that we have here. That is a valuable purpose, and that's why we designate residential zoning. We have commercial zoning, and that is for the motels and all the other commercial interests. The challenge with this is, we have an interest that believes they should be able to use their property for any reason and any way they want without government regulation or anybody else telling them what they can do with their property. And then we have those people who live in a residential area who want to have some degree of tranquility, some degree of peace, some degree of being able to be involved and not having a lot of noise or chaos or traffic. So we've got to balance those issues as we look at this. And when I ask, where do we balance it? Do we balance it in favor of total free use without restriction, or do we, when we talk about residential areas, do we balance it toward trying to build neighborhoods that are integrated, involved, and, and continuous? And I think we err and balance in the latter direction. So then the question is, when we regulate, are we regulating occupancy and pure occupancy, or are we regulating the investment in our communities? If a person comes into a neighborhood and lives there or occupies it for one night or two nights or three nights, there's not much investment in that neighborhood by that occupant. If a person occupies property for a longer period of time, and the general assembly has said more than 30 days is not short-term, then that's what we want to encourage, whether they own it or whether they rent it for six months or a year. That continuity is what we want to promote. So when we look at this ordinance, I, I feel we need to have restrictions that encourage the investment and not the mere occasional occupancy. We talked about the registration, and I'll come back to that, because that's where we are now, that's the topic. We, when we left here, and I think I suggested a one-time registration fee. We don't intend that a person have to pay it every year that they register. I didn't think about, though, what I said, one-time registration fee. What does that mean? Does that mean that it's one time for that person forever and forever, no matter how many other properties he acquires or she acquires? Or does it apply to one time per property? Or does it apply to both? I think, I was thinking that if a person has a property and they register that property and the address is listed on the registration form, then if nothing changes, they don't need to pay the fee again, they just continue to renew. And that gives the city the information of what the contact information is. But if that person sells to someone else, that someone else doesn't get the benefit of the fact that it was one time paid, and even though they didn't pay it, they inherit that benefit. That statute, if it was written the way I suggested it, is ambiguous. It's very ambiguous. And when we have an ambiguity in a law or statute or ordinance, the interpretation that a court is going to give to it is going to favor the public and give a very least restrictive interpretation, so that whatever lax interpretation is given, the person claiming will be able to be entitled to it. And I don't want to do that to our judges, and I don't want to do that to our citizens by writing something that is ambiguous. So I had proposed to the city, and I think Mr. White may put it up there, that in addition to, and this is section 32.2-71.16A, the second sentence in that paragraph read, "Every person filing registration forms within the zoning administrator shall pay a one-time registration fee of $150 per form to defray the cost of processing the registration." I think an addition needs to be added to that to make it clear that the property and the, the owner is not forever and ever exempt from paying it again if things change. And that addition or amendment would be, "An additional fee of $150 shall be paid when either the identity of the owners of a previously registered dwelling unit changes, or, two, an additional address is shown on the registration form filed for a previously registered owner." So if an owner keeps on adding more properties, he's going to have to pay it again. But to make, make it clear that we're not talking about, for example, an owner gets married and wants to add their spouse to the property, so now you have another owner, that would not be included. So this last sentence would be added to it. "A change in, in the identity of owners is deemed to occur if there's any modification in either the quantity of unrelated owners or the nature of the owner." So if I decided I wanted to transfer it to a corporation that I created, or trust, or partnership, that would be a change in the nature of the ownership, so the fee would have to be paid. If I just continued to own it, there would be no additional fee. So I would propose that that change be made, as is shown on the screen. And I think that would be equitable and fair and accomplish what we want, so as to not encourage persons to accumulate multiple properties but only register once and never again, or to buy a property from another person who's registered and be able to undertake that exemption that was paid in previous years.
I understand, I agree with that language, that's just my opinion. But Councilmember Hugelson?
I guess with that, you know, and as we, as we kind of unpeel the onion, and as what we're trying to say is, hey, there should be exemptions, because people do it very infrequently, or there's exemptions because people use their own house, or there's exemptions because you change and you get married. We've just now added several paragraphs, and all it's going to do is make things a little bit more difficult. And I think that's, I agree with Councilmember Wright when he said, maybe we ought to not have that fee. If later we determine the fact that that needs to be in there, they'll be on the registration so you know who they are. We're already getting enough money to offset. We're, we're really, you know, when you mentioned about neighborhoods, and I definitely want us to protect neighborhoods, and when I look at the fact of somebody renting a property that I would love to see be short-term rental as opposed to long-term rental, that is another person that we've got to protect. And so when we're looking at really protecting neighborhoods, I look at some of the neighborhoods that were really protected by short-term rental folks that fixed up their properties and improved the neighborhood. You know, granted, we have some that are negative, totally understand, I saw, I heard those 11 complaints over a period of time, but when we're looking at 440 different folks out of 23,000, 25,000 units, residential units in the city, I think it's pretty small. I think maybe we can look at the fact of saying, let's, we're figuring out how we, in adding language to exempt people, I think it is because the fact that maybe we think that is lonerous, and as the mayor said, it's not about, you know, collecting the mon... that is the onerous, and as the mayor said, it's not about, you know, collecting the money, it's getting the people on the registration, or getting them on the registry. So get them on the registry, collect the lodging tax, and don't have this fee that we've got to kind of figure out year after year. I think that would be a workable solution. That isn't something that's a vested right, because we can, if we discover that next year, oh my goodness, there are so many problems with this, we need to add the fee and raise that fee. I think that we can do because we haven't granted any vested right. I think that gives us the ability to respond and react.
And can I clarify, since you are saying what I said before, I am going to change my opinion right now and say it is about the money. So let me go ahead and state that for the record, too. Thank you. Is there, Councilmember Nelson?
One other thing. I spoke with Mr. White this afternoon about the language I was proposing, and he was good enough to put it up there. But I think I have one correction, and that is in the last sentence where it says, "If there is any modification in either the quantity or nature of the unrelated owners," it should be either the quantity of unrelated owners or the nature of the owners. So I'm not sure what unrelated, the nature of unrelated owners is. So it's a. I would move that the amendment that I read be added to that second paragraph of that code section so to make it clear that the fee is paid again if those two elements change, but a change in property to a related person is not, does not activate that.
So just the motion is on the table, then?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm hoping for some, I'm sorry.
It's not yet, actually.
Well, right, right, it hasn't been seconded. But just to Councilmember Wilder's point a moment ago, just by feeling a little confused, would you mind sort of restating the full scope of the proposed motion?
The motion is limited to expanding that second paragraph of section 32.2-71.16A.
What page are you on?
You'll see it.
I see this up here, but is it in the?
It's in the handout we received.
It would be on page 59, I think. 59 of 117. Looking at the strike through version.
Yes. That's correct. Can you get to section 35.2-71.16? And then you have section A, and the next paragraph does not have a number assigned to it, but it's the paragraph in which we use the term one-time registration fee. I want to clarify what one-time means. So some judge is not sitting there scratching his head and asking, what did council mean by that? This clarifies our legislative intent, that we don't want it to be waived forever regardless of how many properties or how many future owners. It is to be paid every time either the ownership changes, if it's an unrelated person, or if a person adds additional properties to their assembly and inventory of what they had previously registered.
Councilmember.
I'll second it.
I thought you said if they changed, like, to a, the ownership, not just the number of people, but changed it to a trust, or a revocative trust owns it.
That would be a change in the nature.
So where is that on here?
It's not, it's what I'm adding.
Oh.
Councilmember Perro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support this because I think it does add clarity. I think that clarity is important. What it does not do, and council's already decided that there would be a fee, but council has not decided the nature of that fee as far as where it applies. I think that's a worthwhile discussion. But in fact, that there is a fee that council has already voted on, this defines when that fee is applied as far as it relates to property transfer or quantity of unrelated owners. Is that correct? So I think it's, for that purpose, it's a good clarification point. I think it's certainly worthwhile.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Perro. Any further discussion prior to opening it up to others?
So.
Hold on a minute.
So just, I'm sorry, I know I asked a lot of questions.
So theoretically, somebody could register, let's say, let's say they own 10 units, and they could register all 10, and they pay $150 fee. Now, if they purchase an additional unit and they go back to update their registration by adding that 11th item to the inventory, they're paying another $150.
Correct. Change the quantity of the. Addresses. And the key is that they increase a different address. If they took one off, there's no fee.
Okay, thank you. Additional.
It says additional addresses.
And the justification for the additional $150 in that instance, you know, it's not, there's no administrative, really, you know, no real administrative burden on the city by adding that 11th property. So what's the, how do we justify that?
Frankly, as I said in my preamble comment, I don't want to give incentives to having Airbnb lords who continually expand their inventory of properties throughout the city without some consequence, because residential neighborhoods should be for those who are invested in the community and not a commercial commodity.
All right, thank you. Any further clarification or?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Hugelson.
You know, when I, you know, we're looking at wanting to have, you know, it's almost like a punitive kind of penalty if they do extra. And the reality of it is, we're saying, if you look at some of the actual things that have transpired, I grant it, there's bad apples in everything, but this looks at the fact that we'd already collected $150,000 without doing much. A fee, we're already, if somebody is doing a good job with their Airbnb, like that house over on Daniels Hill, that was $32,000, now $211,000, that's an increase of about $1,100 in real estate tax. So they're actually contributing, and I think we're fixating on the person that is renting the property as opposed to the property owner. And so we want property owners to fix up their property, to help with their neighborhoods and making, they're the ones that are really invested. The short-term renter is not invested. And so, I mean, they can come for the day and leave. And so what we really want, we're now putting a punitive, you know, fine or fee on somebody because they're improving and bringing tax revenue to the city. And so it's really kind of a stretch when I see this. I can appreciate the language difference, but maybe if you can look at the punitive nature of it, rather than saying the property owner's already helping us, now going to be collecting thousands of dollars extra in lodging tax, they're also improving their property value, so real estate tax values to the city goes up, they're helping with the neighborhood. So I don't understand how this fee is, you know, I recognize you view it as, you know, punitive, that you've got to pay something. I guess I'm looking at it a little more optimistically, and I'm looking at the fact that we've got like four, 500, maybe renters, Airbnb rental units in the city out of 23, 25,000, but we've got a whole lot of long-term renters in the city that aren't having to pay $150 fee. And so now somebody's got to pay $150 fee plus lodging tax if they rent their house out for 29 days, but they don't if they rent it out for 31 days. To me, it just, there's lots of various things that don't seem equitable in this.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson.
In response to that, the 30 days was set by the General Assembly as short-term. Anything beyond that is not considered short-term, so I don't think we're in a position to talk about the nuances between 29 days or 31. It's set in state statute. Again, the long-term renter does and probably will have a lot more investment in this community to become engaged and be contributing and positive as a resident than someone who stays a weekend or three or four days. And it's that distinction of the quality of the occupancy that's important to me, not whether or not they fall one or two days on each side of the statute.
But you think that $150 is fair and equitable?
I think it is fair because it compensates the city for the cost associated, which all other taxpayers would have to bear otherwise. And with regard to the lodging tax, we can't, I don't think we should waive the lodging tax for what would be essentially a mini motel in a residential neighborhood, but charge our other hotels and motels that same tax. The tax is equitable. If you stay overnight, if you're here for a short-term period, you pay your lodging tax. Question is registering, so that $150 fee, we've been told, is the cost of the processing of the registration. So let's cover those costs.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion and the motion has been made and seconded, I'm ready to call for the vote. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes 6 to 1, no. Thank you very much on that section. Okay. And that's for the language now. Is there anything else that we need of staff? For the, I'm sorry. What do we need to do next? I'm sorry.
We need to approve the ordinance or not?
Right, that's what I thought I'm asking for. Everybody's kind of looking at me like there's something else here that we're doing.
There's different items, so.
Okay, all right.
So if you want to get in, there's another item, unless you're.
So the one item, Mr. White, is the three violations, like, for example, we've talked about, and the mayor suggested that we maybe add a violation if somebody doesn't trim their hedges. You know, obviously, that's not necessarily gone anywhere. But if a, somebody who rents out their property 365 days a year, and if they don't cut their grass, or if they don't trim their hedges or whatever other ancillary things, or they don't paint their gutters or have things falling in, do we revoke their ability to rent out their property?
No, sir. At council's direction, you directed staff to revise it where it's strictly related to the short-term rental use. So noise, trash, occupancy, things like that, so.
So if somebody, do we revoke a long-term renter, the property owner, do we revoke their ability to rent long-term if, under long-term, their tenants were noisy or had trash or other things that you associated with short-term rentals?
No, sir. There's, this provision is allowed by the registry for three violations of local ordinance within three years. Is the way you've directed it.
And the way that it's kind, I don't know if we directed it necessarily, but I think that the way staff had kind of pushed it at first to the Planning Commission, and maybe they massaged and looked at whatnot, I'm not exactly sure of the process, but, so that's coming to us and kind of our really first time talking about the three violations. And so if somebody has three violations within a three-year period of time, their right to work is kind of, or the right to rent out their property ceases. Is that even allowable? We don't do that for a long-term renter. Do we, I mean, if there's building code violations or safety, I realize we can stop things, but we don't say, hey, you can't rent it out anymore. You can't have an ability to earn income.
Yeah, so first, I stand corrected. You were right that Planning Commission is the one who sent us the three violations over three years. That is a change from staff's recommendation. To answer your question, no, we do not do this for any other building violation. This is specifically allowed through the short-term rental ordinance if you choose to adopt it.
And I don't think that is fair. I mean, you know, from the standpoint of if somebody is renting out their office and they didn't, you know, something with their tenant was noisy or trash, we don't revoke their ability to earn income. I think that's, and especially over a three-year period of time. So a three-year period of time, lots of things can happen. To revoke their ability to rent it, I think that's heavy-handed.
And I will say that during the last conversation, I did ask to have a conversation on long-term rental. So to say that we have not done it does not mean that we can't discuss it in the future, because I did ask that conversation to come forward on our long-term rental in the city and what are our policy regulations and for discussion. Councilmember Perro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a hard time getting my head around this also. And I'm drawing a blank on the actual specific language, but is it a civil proceeding or administrative procedure?
The administrative.
So three strikes are out.
Okay.
So is it purely administrative, or is there some sort of judicial-type hearing that allows a case be made?
So I'm going to look at Mr. Irwin as I say this, but my understanding is the zoning official would write a notice of violation, just like you would for any zoning violation.
Right. And that's strike one?
That's strike one. That violation is appealable to the Board of Zoning Appeals, just like any zoning violation. If not, it stands as a strike. If it's not overturned or if it's not contested, you're allowed three of those. At that point, the city may, is allowed to revoke the short-term rental use. At that point, I believe that would be a judicial proceeding, but again, I'll look to Mr. Irwin.
We don't have a judicial proceeding in our, spelled out in the ordinance. What would happen is the zoning administrator, after three strikes, would send the owner a letter saying, "You violated the provisions of the zoning ordinance relating to short-term rentals for three times, so we're revoking your permit to have short-term rentals in your home." If the property owner says, well, zoning administrator, you're wrong, I didn't do it, they can appeal the zoning administrator's decision to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and then from the Board of Zoning Appeals, that decision can be appealed by either party to the circuit court. So there is a judicial proceeding in place.
All right, I'm going to be nitpicky, and thank you, that's very helpful, because my concern is that there is a hearing process where the owner has rights to make sure that, and I know that this administration wouldn't do it, but I would hate to see some owner get railroaded for maybe causes that weren't fully founded. So there is an appeal process, and that's good. Says here in item, in the proposed ordinance itself, item F on page 60, "Three violations of state or local laws, ordinance or regulations for a property offered for short-term rentals and directly related to the short-term rental use within a three-year period shall result in the city revoking approval for the subject property to be used as offered for short-term rentals." But we don't approve short-term property. It's by right statutorily. So does, how do we, to get the intent across, do we say the provisions of this ordinance no longer apply to that property? I, I'm asking questions.
Mr. Martin, who's been writing ordinances for years.
This was included in the draft ordinance because it's in the state code. That's where it came from. It's not something that staff came up with. Originally, it was written as three violations in a one-year period. Planning Commission chose to make it in a three-year period. So it's just a matter of, the General Assembly gave localities the ability to cease the permitted use if they became problems, and that's where it came from. If council chooses not to do so, then remove it.
Well, this gets back to protection of the neighborhoods, and I think this is a valid point. I think that if you've got a repeat offender that's a bad actor, then I'd like for the city to be able to issue notices of violation with some teeth. And I also like for the bad actor to have the ability to appeal that. And so I think that's fair on both sides. I just want to make sure it's clear, so maybe that item needs to be worked a little bit so that we understand it's not a permit. What is it that's being revoked specifically and how that works that can be enforced?
The ordinance says it's your approval. You know, if you register and meet the criteria under the ordinance, you are approved to use your property for a short-term rental. If you violate the ordinance, then we notify you that you have lost your approval under the zoning ordinance, and you can no longer use your property for a short-term rental. So it's, you're right, we don't issue permits. The language from the state code says you lose your, the property owner. The language from the state code says you lose your, the property owner loses their, the locality's approval to use their property for a short-term rental.
I think we need to add some, and like I said, I'm into the weeds here, I think we need to add some language somewhere in the first, or maybe in paragraph A adjacent to Mr. Nelson's proposed language, that basically says if, and I'm paraphrasing, if you've registered, if you've duly registered your property, you are deemed approved for short-term rental use. So that, or something like that.
I think, I think we're only looking at one part of the ordinance, and understandably so, but if you go back to all the other zoning districts, it says they are permitted per section 35.1, 71.16. So if they do not meet those requirements in that section, then they're not, they're not permitted.
So then we need to, so then that's revision.
That's already in the zoning district.
Right. But then you need to do a revision to F. I just don't like the word approval because we're not approving anything. So we either are approving something or we're not approving something. You say is not permitted per section X. Hey, that's fine. I'm just getting hung up on the word approval. And maybe if I'm making them out on the molehill, council can tell me to be quiet and I'll stand down.
I guess when I first brought this up, I think the big problem is, is the fact of, you know, and I can appreciate bad actors. So bad actors don't have three problems within the course of three years. So if you're renting it out 365 days a year, you had one problem in 2017, one problem in 2018, and one problem in 2019, is that really a detriment to the neighborhood because somebody did something one time in the course of a year? Now, if it's a bad actor that does something a lot, absolutely, maybe have something in there. And, but to say three strikes over a course of three years, that's more, that's tougher on somebody that is renting out their residence or their home that they spent a lot of money for than DMV, for crying out loud. You know, when you get problems, it eventually kind of wipes away. This kind of is going to follow you and follow you for, for several years. I don't, I don't think that's the intent. I think the intent is for, if you got someone bad, get them. And I think, you know, what you've mentioned, what they expanded upon it from one year to three years.
I think your logic would stand to reason, cutting it back to three in one year rather than over a three-year period, because each year it could be a, you know, limited circumstance. But if it was consistently approved.
Go in the other direction. And then with that, if that's the case, it's going to be pretty limited as far as, it's probably going to be limited anyway. But the more that you limit it, the less you got to massage the language, I got a feeling.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's a good point that Councilmember Perro has raised. In order to be consistent with our terminology through the ordinance, if you look at the very first sentence of 35.2-71.16, "Short-term rentals as defined in section 35.2113 of this ordinance shall be a use permitted by right." So the word permitted is used in that first paragraph. It would be consistent if in F, as Councilmember Perro said, instead of saying revoking approval, it says revoking permission.
I think the language followed Mr. Nelson would say that the city would advise the property owner that the use of their property for short-term rental is no longer permitted.
Okay.
Take out the allow and just say, since it is a permitted use, if you meet the conditions, if you violate the conditions, then your use is no longer permitted.
So as suggested, if we just changed that approval to no longer permit.
We could tweak that language to permit.
And that would, that would be consistent.
Yes.
And I think, Councilmember Haldison raised a good point. Why is it that we can take away a person's right to use short-term rentals? Why shouldn't we be able to take away a person's right for long-term rentals if they have all these bad things happening? And I think the answer is legislature doesn't give us permission to do that.
Yeah, I think you're exactly right.
In the enabling legislation, but they do for this because this is a special use in residential property.
It's just like the, the grass and the weeds.
Yes.
The general assembly has said, you know, you can take away short-term rentals if they cause problems and violate your conditions. There isn't any comparable legislation in the state code for taking away long-term rentals.
So if you change that end language, you're willing to change the language for the, from a three-year period?
Down to a lesser period, like a one-year period? Or a six-month period?
I wouldn't be opposed to one year.
Excuse me, I'm probably speaking out of turn, Madam Mayor, is this all right? It just, if I could, I, I just think it's really important that we protect the neighborhoods just like Mr. Nelson brought up. And I've allowed for some leniency in some way. I think this is a way to, to make sure that the people, that, that the owners are responsible parties and are managing the use of that building. I could, I could go down to a year. I think Mr. Haldison raised, raised a good point on that. Because if you've got, if you've got a history of, of renting to bad actors, then it's, the complaints are going to happen, you know, in more frequency than once every year for three years.
All right. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
If I may, I would tend to agree with that. If someone is really renting their property on short-term rentals, there's going to be a lot of frequency there, and all it would take to lose the permission would be one bad incident for each of the three years, and it's gone. And that's not, it's not hard to do. I would, I would agree, one year would be a reasonable time.
All right. Any further discussions there, second?
I'll make, I'll make that as a motion, that we modify that to one year.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you. The motion has been made. If no further discussion, I'm calling for the vote. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Seven. Let me see. Next is the STR become permitted use is when the ordinance is adopted.
I'm sorry, are you?
Oh.
You kind of glazed over the approval for the subject property to be used. Are you changing that to the use no longer being permitted?
Madam Mayor?
I'd like to move to adopt the language that Mr. Irwin presented to change, approve to no longer permitted in section F.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes seven to zero. All right. On to the next. Okay. Mr. White?
So really, we don't have anything. We made our clarifications on those four points. Those were the only things we'd heard at this point, so we'll, we'll take whatever comments you have.
Yes. Councilmember Wright, thank you.
Mr. White, can you just explain once again the consequence if we adopt an ordinance that doesn't acquire owner occupancy?
Yeah. So what you're doing is you're vesting that right without owner occupancy. Anything going forward, if, there were just numbers of comments about we'll change it in the future, and that's not how this works. It would become a non-conforming use at that point, under whatever conditions you adopt with this ordinance. That non-conforming use basically has staying power. It's two, it, the, the state code allows it to continue for two, or to not operate for two years, so at any point in two years, it could start again and still get that original provision that was granted by your original ordinance, if that makes sense. And the only reason I clarify it is, in August, you had talked about it in terms of grandfathering. The grandfathering, staff would issue basically an administrative permit that would follow the owner, but when that owner no longer operated, the use would go away, that original condition would go away.
Does a non-conforming use, this more like extends to every property in the city for a two-year time period?
Correct. Non-conforming uses, and I've got both Tom Martin and Kevin Henry here who can tell you a lot about non-conforming uses, but basically, they can exist long after. So when we originally changed the zoning ordinance in 1978, we still have non-conforming uses from 1978.
So it's, so if, I just want to understand, like, just the, what the various sort of scenarios are that could play out in the event of a non-conforming use? So if we decide to change the law in three years' time?
And you suddenly want to require owner occupancy?
We suddenly want to require it, yeah.
Yeah. So in, at that point, we're working off of a number of 483 short-term rental units. Those 483 short-term rental units would then be non-conforming uses. They would not, they would not have to have owner occupancy.
Okay. But only ones that are currently operating at that time?
That's right.
They, they wouldn't, people wouldn't be able to start one up within the two-year timeframe after that, and then, so you're saying you have to be operating by the time council were to make a change in the future in order to, to sort of qualify as a non-conforming?
That's right.
You have to be a lawful conforming use at the time council amends the zoning ordinance.
I see.
So if you're operating, you're non-owner occupied, and then council changes it, everybody who had a non-owner occupied use would be able to continue that use as a non-conforming use unless they discontinued it for two years, or unless their property is destroyed. If your non-conforming use is destroyed, unless it's by natural means, it goes away. For example, if my, if I have my non-conforming use and it gets hit by lightning and burns down, state code says I can build it back. If I have my non-conforming use and I'm smoking in bed and burning it down myself, I can't build it, you know, back. That natural phenomenon stuff was put in a couple of years ago after a lot of non-conforming uses were destroyed as a result of hurricanes in Virginia so that people could rebuild their non-conforming residence.
So this means that there are a lot of, we can, we would expect that in the interim, there would be a number of additional properties, which would then, if we were to change it, be justified.
The longevity of the non-conforming use versus the grandfathering is the distinction. Yes, sir.
So we had originally discussed, the council didn't use it, but remember at one point, we had discussed, you know, saying that anybody who has a non-owner occupied use at this time is grandfathered, and they can continue to operate it, but they cannot transfer that non, that grandfathered use to another owner. Non-conforming uses can be transferred to a new owner. Non-conforming uses run with the land. Grandfathering is a difference. Non-conforming use is a use that you acquire by law. Grandfathering is a use that the local governing body decides to give the property owner. So if you're concerned that you don't want to create a lot of possible non-conforming uses that would never go away, we did discuss saying that non-owner occupied property, owner occupied properties would be grandfathered from this point, so the current owners wouldn't have to stop if council changed the ordinance, but they would not be able to transfer that grandfathering to a new owner. If they sold the property, it would have to go back to a owner occupied use.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Over the course of months, we have made a lot of changes to this proposed ordinance, and I think at this point, we're at a point where we could approve it. We've approved a couple of elements tonight. Do we need to comprehensively approve everything that we have amended, or does it stand on its own at this point?
Well, we have amended things individually, and some of the things in the ordinance we haven't discussed. So I think if you're ready to approve it, you would make a motion to approve the ordinance as amended, you know, tonight.
I would, I would.
Did he just say there's some things we haven't discussed? Did I hear that?
Well, you haven't discussed every provision in the draft ordinance that's before you. You've discussed these several areas, but you haven't discussed every provision in it, so we're assuming that those are okay. But what would I think would be appropriate would be a motion saying we approve the entire ordinance as amended tonight.
Yes. I think a month and a half or so ago, Councilmember Perro had us methodically go through every part of it, and we had consensus on those things that were not marked in red or were not marked out. So at this point, it's my impression and recollection that what's before us, as modified tonight, is the entire ordinance we're dealing with, STRs, and I'd make a motion to approve it as amended.
Can, I hear the motion. Can I ask the question, Councilmember Wright, were you asking about owner occupancy for a reason? Further discussion?
For further, well, certainly I wanted to clarify that point.
Okay.
I'll also confess to being troubled by that particular provision. It is something that I find concerning and certainly would welcome in a conversation on.
Councilmember Perro?
I'd second the motion.
Okay. The motion has been made to adopt the STR as it stands. Any further discussion? Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Perro?
I have.
No further comment, I defer.
The only thing with regard to Councilmember Wright's concerns is, at this point, we don't require owner occupancy in any way whatsoever. If it's going to be in STR, it's got to be registered, and everything else we've talked about. We can revisit that later and tag it as grandfathered, grandfathered or something else, but that would be arising when we talk about owner occupancy.
Vice Mayor Dolan? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Perro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I seconded, I seconded this ordinance because I, I think it's a reasonable compromise between a lot of the points. I have had so many good conversations with people about this ordinance, pro and con. I think that two very reasoned, reasoned people can have just completely different opinions on this, on this ordinance, and then agree on, on most everything else in their lives. I mean, I've seen just the gamut of opinions. I don't think there's a, there's no definitive right way or wrong way to do this. I believe that we've worked hard, we've gone through the issues, we've hashed out some compromises. It's certainly not perfect, but I think it's a pretty good stab. Let's talk about the good things it does. Currently, short-term rentals are not allowed in the city. It allows short-term rentals. It sets up a way for the city to collect revenue, lodging tax revenue, which makes it fair for hotels and other areas that complain that they, they have to pay the lodging tax. So it sets that up. It creates a list of those people that are doing this so we can understand in the long term what the impact is to our neighborhood. And then if, if there is a problem, we have the teeth to actually take, to actually remove the short-term rental from that neighborhood, following a jurisprudence process or something similar to it. It does, so in that way, it protects our neighborhoods, but it still allows property owners the ability to use their, their property as they see fit. I think it's a good balance. We can go back and we can tweak it. I think that the non-conforming use as, I don't think that's going to last forever. Yes, it does have staying power. I think that's exactly correct. But that assumes that a house in a neighborhood is going to be sold as a business as opposed to a residence. I, I think that could be the case, but I don't think it's going to be the, the majority of the cases. I think that if there's a house that just happens, somebody's got it as an investment property, they put it on the market, somebody buys it, moves in, maybe it's their permanent resident, residents, then, then the two years pass and it's no longer a non-conforming use. So I think that's an outlier. I think, I think that this, this proposed ordinance equally addresses the positives and the negatives of short-term rental. Like I said, it's not perfect, but I think it's a good compromise that we worked out, and we did hash through this thing pretty well. So thank you for the, for the conversation and, and the discussions. I think everybody raised good points.
Thank you, Councilmember Perro. Vice Mayor Dolan?
Thank you. Yeah, we did hash through it, but I thought that we hashed through the owner occupancy with kind of a paintbrush, and I'm still not convinced that the integrity of our neighborhoods would not be totally compromised. There's, there is nothing in place that prevents an investor from going into the neighborhoods, buying up blocks of homes, and turning that neighborhood into a mini hotel area. So I will not support this ordinance as written. So I will not support this ordinance as written.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And so for me, too, I think the biggest challenge here has been owner occupancy in R1 and R2. I think that's the one that, that has vexed me the most, though I agree with, with Councilmember Perro, that, you know, this isn't an industry that, you know, governments are finding easy to, to deal with, especially municipal governments. This is a really challenging set of circumstances where you're trying to balance the, you know, traditional homeowners with a new and evolving, and largely positive, technology that a lot of folks quite understandably want to take advantage of. So I voted to remove owner occupancy, sort of strip it as a requirement, believing, as I still do, that our regulatory touch should be as light as possible, to ensure maximum compliance and protect private enterprise, especially given how many people in our community rely on STRs as an income stream. And for some of them, it's their entire income. And I voted also to remove, for a number of other reasons, including issues around grandfathering, the significant investment that STRs can bring to a neighborhood, which Councilmember Helgason has cited, the need for more non-traditional lodging options in the community, which STRs can provide, and others. And I voted this, but with the caveat that if we find that regulations aren't working as designed and issues start cropping up in neighborhoods, that council, I believe, should update the regulations with solutions that are targeted and tailored specifically to address the problems that arise, and not a one-size-fits-all approach on the front end, that might stifle business. And I know that for some, we've gotten letters, I don't know if you've also gotten letters from folks, you know, for whom this logic does not work. You know, why wait for a problem to arise, like having a mini-motel next door? And why not tackle it now? And I think that's, as Vice Mayor Dolan pointed, I think it's a really sympathetic argument. I think it's a really powerful argument. Then there's the question about this fundamental shift in what it means to live in an R1 and R2 neighborhood. So it concerns me that by not requiring owner occupancy in these districts, we're shifting the goalposts significantly of what those zoning designations mean. So folks who bought into the city, into R1 and R2, probably didn't buy their homes with the expectation that somebody would buy the home next door, turn it into a business, and then rent it out to hundreds of people potentially each year. They didn't buy into and nurture these neighborhoods with the expectation that there would be a large business right next door. So times change, and technology adapts, and new markets open up, and I think that's what you're seeing us wrestle with here, is just how to reconcile this. And I think, to go back to Councilmember Perro's point, we really, you know, I think the future here is opaque. We don't really know exactly what this will portend for our community, and I think, I still think that the lighter the touch here, the better until we have a real eye on what issues arise, if they arise. But I will just note, even though I'm going to vote for this, I do find the owner occupancy, the lack of a requirement there in R1 and R2 concerning.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Wilder?
I appreciate the discussion, because it is a very sensitive topic. And we have received several comments, and several emails, and several letters in reference to this particular topic. I will support it, because at least it is a starting point. Again, nothing is perfect. You may have some challenges here, and some challenges there, but at least it's a starting point, and we can start from here, and we can move forward on, and just continue listening to our neighbors and citizens to see what some of their concerns are, and make adjustments as needed.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I, oh, okay, go ahead. Councilmember Helgason?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, this, I do appreciate a lot of the discussion that has transpired over the last month or so. You know, with this, there's lots of, I recognize there are some positive things in here, but I do realize that there's a lot of negatives, you know, from the standpoint of having a fee that can be added on to people just because we decided to add it. You know, I think we kind of should have wrestled with that and recognized the benefit to our neighbors, and the benefits to our neighborhoods. That adding that hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee is on top of somebody who is improving their property and paying taxes, and agreeing to submit to lodging taxes. I'm really, I'm really conflicted with that. You know, it's, it's not just an all-or-nothing kind of thing, it's the fact of we value people who own their own houses. And some of them live there, some of them rent them out, some of them live there and rent them out, to pay for them. And so we really got to look and say, does the reality match the rhetoric? Over these last several months, we've heard from lots of people. Lots of people that at first said how bad these were, and how they were going to destroy neighborhoods. I've looked at it personally, as far as in my neighborhood, and I kind of wish I had some Airbnbs as opposed to long-term renters, because the cops come over there and arrest them, and take them, and then next week, somebody else. I mean, it's, you know, when you get the Airbnb short-term renter, they come in, they got money to spend in the city, we have some excellent hosts that welcome them to the city, that spend money, that do lodging, now submitting lodging taxes, and coming and eating at our restaurants, and, you know, when we talk about Lynchburg being a great place to live, work, and play, you know, we have a whole tourism industry and a whole tourism department that tries to attract people here. And so when we have citizens that are attracting people here through a various platform, you know, I think we ought to have a lighter touch on that. And I think some of the things that we've come up with, I think, are definitely an improvement from just how bad it really could have been. And so I think a lot of the, on both sides, they appreciate that, that you've come to some thought, and it wasn't just, we heard it, and planning commission made recommendations, and we approved it. So we're all to be, I think, commended for the time that we spent on here. You know, with it, I really want us to protect neighborhoods. And in protecting neighborhoods, I realize we can look at, once a month, or once a year, or once whenever, of an Airbnb rental, or we can look at wholesale changes for a neighborhood. You know, some people that I represent out in Leesville Road bought into an R1 neighborhood. They had that anticipation. They've lived there for twenty years. They had the anticipation that their neighbors, which is R1, is going to stay R1. And when we wholesale make changes to the whole land that says, hey, you're R1, you can have a house, now you're R3, and you can have eighty-seven townhomes, all of which are going to be kind of lots of rental, I really, you know, question, do we really protect all neighborhoods? Those are neighborhoods and neighbors that said, you know, we like it to stay R1. And so, you know, with that, I can appreciate the fact of wanting to protect neighborhoods, protect neighborhoods and neighbors and property owners, and I think will work out fairly well. So that's my last spiel.
Thank you. I will support this. I will say that I did vote against the motion that took away the owner occupancy, because I think owner occupancy is necessary. And I get a little conflicted. I am looking forward to bringing the LTR here, long-term rental, to the conversation, because I think we can mix and match arguments, and mix and match presentations, developments, and proposals. I do want to maintain the integrity of neighborhoods. I think to agree with, you know, disagree with eighty-seven townhomes, or agree with eighty-seven people in one residence over a period of a month in a neighborhood, I don't know, it's conflicting to me. I mean, but I won't debate that right now. I will be supporting the motion. I think we are in a different era, a different economy. I think, I don't want to inhibit people from being business owners and opportunity, but at the same time, as has been said, people buy into neighborhoods that they believe will improve and maintain their quality of life, and we have to respect that. So where the balance is, I appreciate everyone's dialogue and conversation, and the additional thought outside of meetings, and bringing that verbiage and language to the table. And we, you know, I think I, for one, want to see it come back to us in a report, or a follow-up of number of registered persons, and where we think it's going in a certain time period. I'll leave that to the staff to figure out what time period is a good time to bring that to us. But I would like to have some type of follow-up from, as a report out of where we are in the future. So if there's, yes, Councilmember Helgason, and we do have, can I just say, we do have a closed meeting after this that we're going to get to, so.
Just one thing I did want to say, as I had the privilege of meeting, as Councilmember Wright stated, we heard from lots of people, different groups and different theories, and I had the privilege of meeting with a lot of the Airbnb hosts. And I was shocked. I've never been in Airbnb, don't even know what it is. They educated me wholeheartedly, and I appreciate it. I appreciate them and their desire to do, to be good hosts in the neighborhood. I appreciate hearing from our citizens that had some concerns and complaints. You know, I'm glad council listened and wrestled with the decision. So again, I want to thank, it was great to meet them, and it was nice, thank you for your cards, and I did get a couple thank-you cards, too. So that was very, very nice, very hospitable.
All right, thank you. The motion is on the floor for the overall vote. It has been seconded. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes five to two no. Thank you very much. Thank you, staff, for working on this over the period of time, so thank you. Next, all right, thank you. Next is consideration of a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members regarding a legal matter requiring the provision of legal advice, specifically legal matters relating to the Regent Two Thousand Services Authority member use agreement for the disposal of solid waste pursuant to section two-point-two-dash-thirty-seven-eleven A seven of the Code of Virginia. May I have a motion to go into a closed meeting?
So moved.
The motion has been made and seconded. Please cast your vote.
Do we get to discuss it?
Any further discussion about that? Thank you. Oh, is there any further discussion about that? All right, thank you very much. Please, please vote. Thank you. Has everyone voted?
There you go. I wanted to vote with Sterling. Thank you, Sterling.
All right, and the motion passes six to one to go into closed meeting.